Good evening, everyone. I would like to bring the May 15th, 2019 meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors to order. Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Fagan?
Here.
Ms. Alonso?
Here.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Here.
Ms. Vericchio?
Here.
Ms. Joseph?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Present.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Chabon?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Here.
Mr. Evans, can we have the invocation?
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District. And grant to this board in their deliberations this evening the Spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this, we ask in your name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on, we will have our reports from the student representatives, Ms. Shemlock and Mr. Keeney.
I'm going to start off with the kindergarten academy. Much thought and planning goes into the organization of the upcoming events, including Field Day, May Fair, and the end-of-year celebrations. These are special events that promote the development of learning skills, physical growth, endurance, and socialization. There's also a party of the yearly traditions that make the Interboro Kindergarten Academy a special place.
Glenolden School had a couple spirit days this month. On April 11th, students were encouraged to dress like their favorite superhero. On May 9th, students participated in a district-wide Dress Down Day for Minithon. The students donated $1 and dressed in blue and yellow to show their support towards raising awareness for pediatric cancer. On April 26th, the 6th through 8th grade students enjoyed a Kona Hawaiian ice as their third-quarter PBIS award reward. The truck parked in the back lot, and students were able to create their own treats. Student of the Month assemblies were held on May 3rd. A student from each homeroom was recognized for being humorous. They then enjoyed a light refreshment with their families in the library to celebrate their achievement. Glenolden's awesome staff helped serve the community at McDonald's on Tuesday, April 30th. The students were very excited to see the friendly faces of some of their teachers. The 2nd grade has been learning all about how to deal with daily conflict through the Peacemakers Program, taught by the guidance counselor, Mrs. Cronin. For eight weeks, students discussed strategies to solve conflicts in appropriate ways and learned songs. As a culminating performance, they performed in their annual Peacemaker Show Wednesday, May 8th. The staff would like to thank the Home and School Association for providing them with a mouth-watering luncheon on May 8th. The 4th and 5th graders showcased the warm weather only means one thing, spring is here. The 4th and 5th graders showcased their singing and instrumental talents by putting on an incredible spring concert on May 9th. Students in 1st grade kicked off the Mother's Day weekend by enjoying some delicious muffins and juice. It was certainly a memorable morning. After learning about the differences between the New England, Middle, and Southern colonies, 5th graders have had a chance to experience hands-on learning through various colonial activities. Social studies was combined with science as students read about the history of six items that were made during colonial times. They were tasked with the assignment to find evidence to determine whether a physical or chemical change was involved in each process. Later, on Friday, May 3rd, the students participated in Colonial Day at school, making homemade butter, silhouettes, Betsy Ross stars, as well as name placards and journal entries using quill pens. The students will also be adding to their colonial experience on Friday, May 17th, when they visit the colonial plantation on a field trip.
At Norwood School, on April 3rd, Barnhill Preserve, a small zoo out in Delaware came to Norwood School. Students in grades 1 through 3 enjoyed looking and learning about five different animals. The students learned interesting facts about the Bearded Dragon, armadillos, a Boxed Turtle, a Python, and a Hedgehog. The huge hit of the show was meeting Duke, a seven-month-old baby kangaroo. After the assembly, students had the opportunity to get their pictures taken with the turtle, the Bearded Dragon, or the kangaroo. A fun morning with the zoo at the school. Elementary and middle school students competed in the annual Reading Olympics competition held at North Lee Middle School. 2nd grade field trip was to John Heinz. Life skill classes went on field trips to the Philadelphia Zoo and Hearst Chip Factory. ELA and math PSSA tests were administered to students in grades 3rd through 5th, and the science PSSA test was administered to students in grades 4th through 8th. On May 3rd, our elementary students participated in our annual Trump-a-thon fundraiser. Donations go directly to the American Heart Association. 8th grade car wash was held on May 4th. This fundraiser helps support their school deans.
The month of April was a busy one at Prospect Park School. The 3rd through 8th graders worked diligently to complete the English and math PSSA tests, and with the 4th and 8th graders completing the science tests as well. 3rd grade classes had a special planetarium experience, come to Prospect Park as they enjoyed the Stars on the Move show in the library. Our middle school was recognized for their positive, productive, and proud behavior with a trip to the Funplex. And for their academic success, middle school honors and distinguished honor students were recognized for their hard work and achievement at an assembly before the entire middle school.
Tinnicum's elementary reading Olympics team competed on April 2nd, and our middle school reading Olympics team competed on April 3rd. Both teams did very well and had a good time. Tinnicum's student council held an egg hunt for our 1st graders on April 12th. All of the students enjoyed this event, and it was a great way to start their spring break. On April 26th, while our 3rd through 8th graders were busy taking their PSSAs, our 2nd graders visited bear country at the Franklin Mink Credit Union. The students learned valuable financial lessons while at the same time having some fun with the bears.
On Wednesday, April 26th, the high school hosted their annual art show. Work from all levels of the art program was on display, with particular focus on the AP Art seniors. Many thanks to those who attended, and a special thank you to Mrs. Evans and the Home and School Association for generously providing the judges and the prize money. On April 25th, they celebrated the National Honor Society induction. Thirty-eight seniors and 12 juniors were honored for their academic, athletic, musical, and community service achievements. While the ceremony is comparatively short in duration, much goes into the production in the hope that we present ourselves well to the community. While Ms. Hume, Mr. McGrady are in charge of NHS, they would be unable to put on an induction without the help of the administrators and colleagues. Just wanted to take a minute to thank those teachers and administrators who helped chaperone the junior prom. We wouldn't have had a successful night without your help. It was much appreciated. The night was a great success. Food was great, music was awesome, and the kids looked fantastic. Looking forward to seeing the kids at the senior prom on May 23rd at Lincoln Financial Field. On April 30th, the 9th grade students attended DCCC, College for a Day, event where they were able to tour the campus, learn about skilled trades, and the allied health industry. The goal was for students to increase their knowledge of dual enrollment opportunities while in high school and post-secondary options. Student council officer elections were held today. Congratulations to the elected officers for the 2019 and 2020 school year. Zach Keeney will be taking over for me as both senior board representative and president, and taking over for Zach as junior board representative will be Francesca Parker. I would also like to thank the members of the board for a wonderful two years. It has been an honor to serve with you. Thank you.
I would like to say, thanks, Sam, for helping me out and putting up with my stuff going through this.
And this concludes our report.
Thank you, Ms. Shemlock and Mr. Keeney. Moving on to number three recognition, Ms. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. At this time, I would like to ask the board members to please have a seat in the audience, and we'll get started with our awards, with our performance by our course.
At this time, the Board of School Directors would like to recognize the class of 2019, Senior Board Representative Samantha Shemlock. She will be attending-- Come on down. Here's a plaque from the district for you, and a certificate of appreciation. And Samantha will be attending Mansfield University. Congratulations. I know you'll represent Interboro in the way that we need to be represented.
Thank you.
And also, I would like to congratulate our elected junior board representative for 2019 and '20, Francesca Parker. If you could stand. There she is. Thank you, Francesca. Welcome to the board. And at this time--
I'd like to announce the winners of the Wellesley Book Award this year. This award goes to two outstanding junior young women with exceptional academic records who are involved in both the school and local community, and hold leadership roles in co-curricular and community groups. This year's recipients are Lauren Reader and Danielle Scott.
It's my pleasure to announce the winner of this year's Richard B. Greenhouse Award, given each year to the top achieving sophomore. So highest GPA and first in class currently for the 10th grade. This is a nice award because Richard Greenhouse was, in the 80s and 90s, a 10th grade mentor and guidance counselor. So he had a strong connection to the 10th grade, and that's why this is given to a sophomore each year. And it's given in honor by his two brothers. So one of them actually came down, met with this year's recipient last week, spent some time, talked about his brother. Actually, Mr. Cassandra stopped by because he knows everybody who ever taught here, so he knew Richard Greenhouse personally. So it was a nice time. They really appreciated the time that Carolyn Cornichuk gave to them this year, and she is this year's Richard Greenhouse winner. And with that comes a couple gifts from the Greenhouse family. There you are. I'm going to get a picture right here. Next on the agenda, we're giving an award to each senior who, throughout their high school career, whether it was while they were freshman, sophomore, junior, earned the highest scale score in each Keystone testing subject. Quite a feat. So first, we'll announce the winner for the algebra, and Dylan Longell is this year's winner. Dylan's not here. He's playing lacrosse. He came to me yesterday a little worried. He's like, "I have this lacrosse game." I'm like, "Yeah, okay, play lacrosse, but win, all right? We know it's the first time you're in the playoffs since 2006, so go, boys, lacrosse. Good luck to them." But Dylan appreciated the recognition. Next up for biology, also advanced, best, highest-earning senior for the Keystone Biology exam, David Phillips. Yep, sure that, there you go. All right, congratulations. David actually earned a 1722 on Module 1 of that biology exam, which is pretty tough, so that's amazing. You have to get at least 1,500 to be proficient. Typically, 1,600s are your advanced. The max is 1,800, and he scored a 1722 on one of the modules, so that was really great. Lastly, Keystone exam for English literature, so the top achieving senior in this area, also advanced, Sarah McFarland.
On behalf of the Home and School Association, I would like to announce the winners of this year's poetry and art contests. Each award winner receives a certificate and a monetary prize from the Home and School Association. So this year's poetry contest received 122 applicants, so this is a really outstanding achievement from these students. Three poems tied for 3rd place. In 3rd place for her poem, Grow Up, Megan Deanie. In 3rd place for her poem, The Demon Barber of Fleet Street, Gina Robinson. In 3rd place for his poem, The Beauty of Nature, Issa Harari. In 2nd place for her poem, Search, Bailey Collington. And finally, in 1st place for his poem, It's Not Right, Naim Brown. And I know that not all of our award recipients were able to be here for the art contest this year, but I'm going to read all the names. The Home and School Association selected this year's winners of the art contest from the artwork that was displayed in our annual Interboro High School Art Show. The artists were selected based on the overall strength of their work in each category. The winner of the Art 1 category is Maria Rohitznova. I don't believe she was able to make it this evening. The winner of the Art 2 category is Vazira Hapardieva. I don't know if Vazira's here.
Good evening. My name's Michelle McAvoy. For those who don't know me, I am one of the school counselors here. I'm also one of the Minithon advisors. So Minithon is an annual event for which students work all year long to raise money for the Four Diamonds, and that is an organization that helps in research to help find a cure for pediatric cancer, and also helps to pay for families that have a child fighting cancer. They help to pay for their treatment if they have to pay for their treatment, or, I'm sorry, if they have to travel for it. They help to pay those travel costs. The Four Diamonds helps to make it so that the families never see a bill ever the entire time while their children are battling cancer. So it's a really big undertaking, and we have a really fabulous group of seniors that took that on as their project this year. A lot of them started at last year's juniors-- I need to lift this up. There we go. A lot of them started at last year's juniors. They started meeting over the summer and got a nice early start. We had a really awesome, successful event this past Saturday. It was seven hours here at the high school, over 200 students. We had all kinds of really fun activities going on. A lot of community members came and helped. We had someone come in and teach a zumba class, do yoga. We had an animal reserve come with a baby kangaroo. It was a lot of fun. And at the end, we did a reveal of the grand total raised. So the grand total raised that we revealed at the end of the event on Saturday was over $19,000. But the students also had to raise money to be able to put on the event, so they actually raised well over $20,000 over the year. And when I did the calculations, these students put in over 100 hours over the course of this school year, just so far, because they're not quite done, making this happen. They met every single week. They gave up a lot of evenings. They gave up several of their weekends to make this happen. So I'm super proud of them, and we just wanted to recognize them tonight. So I'm going to call your names one at a time, and I have a certificate for you. And if you guys can stay up here when I call you, so I can get a picture of all of you at the end, okay? So the first one is Ashley Chappas. Malinda Guglielmo. I don't think she was able to make it tonight. She is working, but she was very appreciative of the recognition. Carol Ann Miller. And Victoria, who goes by Tori, also shared her personal story at our event, which we are very appreciative of. Kayanne Sylvester. And last, but certainly not least, Yamiya Webb. Go down one more.
About one more round of applause for all the award recipients tonight. For those that follow the Interboro High School Twitter account, oftentimes, I started off, it's very simple, and I just simply write, "More buck pride." And I learned that through the fact that every time you open a newspaper here, every time our kids do something, it is exceptional. Again, tonight, you're seeing even more of it. But take a look at what's going on in this building and what these kids are doing, the hundreds of hours these kids are spending doing things. The greatest asset that any community has is its school, and the greatest tools that any of us teachers have are our students. Tonight, this group that I'm about to announce exemplifies that very idea of buck pride. But they are beyond a grade point average. These are beautiful, intelligent, athletic, and smart children. They are your children that every day you entrust to us. These are the group of kids that spent countless hours here, burned that midnight oil, doing all that homework, coming up and studying for these exams in study groups on the extra hours, and giving that grit and determination to put them at the top of the class. It is my privilege tonight to announce the top 5% of the class of 2019. As I announce your names, I would like you to come down here. I'll give you your certificate. And I also want to thank the Interboro Alumni Association. I saw Mrs. Riley, Rosemary and Claire, if you can just put your hand up. Guys, they've also-- these t-shirts you're going to get as well during the recognition, so thank you again for that. First up is Francis Bosch. First up is Francis Bosch. Isabella Bruch. Madison Coral. Annalise Dunight. Next is Connor Evans, who is another one of our students who can't be here tonight because he's in the middle of a playoff lacrosse game. Rachel Grabius. Kimberly Hang. Jesse Hickman. Just a side note, Jesse's graduating high school in three years, not the traditional four that the rest of us did, so congratulations with that. Katherine Hickman. Kevin Corjano. He's not coming tonight. Do I understand that? Kevin's not here tonight. Sarah McFarland. David Phillips. James Razi. Samantha Shemlock. Alex Sun. And Annalisa Varekio. Congratulations to the top 5% of the class of 2019. Okay, guys, you can have a seat. And at this time, should you turn your attention to the screen as there was a video production from our top 5% of the class?
Hi, my name is James Razi. I'm a senior at Innerboro, obviously in the top 5%. Truly, this wouldn't be the same place, the same high rachamont, learning experience without our teachers and staff. To Innerboro High School, I want to thank you for the most amazing four years of my life. I want to thank you for helping me set up for a bright future, and I want to thank you for providing me an education and making sure kids like me in the future are going to be successful as well.
Hi, I'm Rachel Grabius. I went to Tinnicum Elementary School, and I thoroughly enjoyed my high school experience. I wouldn't trade it for the world. From freshman year to senior year, I've met so many new friends and teachers that have definitely shaped who I am today.
Hi, I'm Isabella Bruch. I'm from Norwood, and I've gone to Norwood School from first to eighth grade, and I've lived here my entire life. I'm glad I went to Norwood. It was a great school, great teachers. My experience at Innerboro High School has been great, too, along with my experience at Norwood. There's a lot of great teachers, great staff, and I met so many students that I probably wouldn't have talked to at all or would have never met if it wasn't for this school.
Hi, I'm Annalisa Varekio, and I'm very grateful for the past four years here at Innerboro High School. I've been involved in many activities here, such as student council, French club, National Honor Society, and I'm also a freshman mentor and an eighth-grade orientation leader. One of the things I'm going to miss most about Innerboro is the community and all the friends I've made here along the way.
Hi, I'm Maddie. I'm going to Delaware County Community College next year. I've interacted with so many teachers at the school who just really care about their jobs, and I think that's what's really great about Innerboro, is that so many teachers don't just care about the academics, but they care about you as a person, and you can really tell through their involvement in clubs and all the things that they do for the students.
Hi, I'm Jesse Hickman. So my time here was kind of short. I've only been here for three years because I had the opportunity to skip a grade. Innerboro really helped me, the teachers here, the counselors, the administrators, they all helped me get through it, and they pushed me to do it. So I'm really proud to be an Innerboro student.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Hang. I went to Tinnicum Elementary School, and my time at Innerboro here has been really rewarding. I felt like I've made the most of the opportunities that Innerboro gave me, from joining numerous clubs, from Haikyuu to Class Congress, and interacting with numerous people across all different classes.
I'm Annalise Dunight. I'm going to Penn State for biomedical engineering. Innerboro has taught me how to be a hard worker and not expect to get anything for no work, so it has basically taught me to just always work hard and never give up on anything that I think I deserve.
Hi, my name is Connor Evans. I'm a senior at Innerboro High School, and I'm in the top 5% of the class. One of the most amazing things of Innerboro High School is the camaraderie ship. Every staff member here cares about who you are as a person and what's going on outside of school, and that's why I'm proud to be a Buck.
Hi, I'm David Phillips. I'm a senior at Innerboro. The people here, we work hard, we're humble, and our teachers, they don't act condescending to us. They just want to help people. I think that's, the teachers and the people here is the best part of Innerboro.
Hello, I'm Frank Bosch. I think that the high school has a lot to offer if you're willing to look for it. For me, that was band. I was involved in all the bands since the beginning. Band was special to me, you know? Performing solo, like I do occasionally, is a real good confidence booster, so I enjoy that a lot.
Hi, I'm Katie Hickman. High school was definitely an interesting experience. I've always been someone who's been super musical, like my whole life, and so for me here, I was really involved in a lot of the music programs. Being involved in those activities, they really open you up to all the other people who also just have the same interests as you and who just like to perform the same way you do.
I'm Kevin Corjano. I went to Glen Oden School. I enjoyed my time in Conti's physics class. It really opened my interpretation of what the world, how the world works. The physics and the science that I'm learning right now really does help me in that I want to be a computer engineer and maybe work on computers that possibly go to space.
Hi, my name is Sarah McFarland, and I went to Glen Oden Elementary School. I think that Innerboro has really taught me how to take advantage of all the opportunities that I'm given and the value of hard work, especially in classes like AP Econ and clubs like the Boeing Business High School competition.
Hi, I'm Alex Sun. I went to Nord Elementary School, and my time at Innerboro was really a roller coaster from student council to class congress to Physics Olympics. And all the AP exams I've taken, it's really been a rewarding experience. Innerboro has taught me how to really be independent, because sometimes you're going through school and you're getting caught up, but then you realize you have your friends and other clubs and activities that you get distracted from because you're having so much fun. And it's okay to feel stressed sometimes, but in the end, everything works out.
Hi, I'm Samantha Shemlock, and I'm student council president here. I'm a school board representative. I'm on Class Congress. I'm NHS historian. I played field hockey and lacrosse for four years, and I'm involved in band, theater, and choir. Some teachers that have had an impact on me here would be Mr. Soroka, Mr. Meck, Mrs. Solerno, Ms. McGee, and of course, Co-Stans. These are just some teachers who have always had my best interests at heart and have helped me to be where I am today. I would just like to thank the principals and the administrators here for helping with any project that I've had in mind this year, especially the school revamp project, which was one really close to my heart. It really means a lot, and I'd like to thank them all.
If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Doby, I think it's $117?
And is there increase per year?
Yes, sir.
And what is that increase?
It is 3%.
How much?
3%.
3%. And the fringe benefit, is there any payment towards healthcare by a Mr. High School? Or is it a full coverage?
He does pay a minimum.
There is contribution by Mr. High School?
Yes.
Number 21, you're making a notification for a publication to increase the tax imposed for parking lot fees that people have when they use parking lot facilities. Now, most of these, if not all of them, are in Tinnicum Township. So I object to this kind of tax increase. This is not necessary, and the fact that you're doing this with no reasonable explanation as to why is, and to my representative, Ms. Fagan, and the other representative from Tinnicum Township, you should vote no on this, as well as the board. You should not approve this. It's overreaching in your effects in trying to gain more money. On number 22, you're proposing a final general budget with an increase of 3.1%, which according to what you said at the finance committee meeting, was the equivalent of $1.2 million. Is that still the case?
Approximately, sir, yes.
So $1.2 million. Now, again, the issue that I bring up with you is that you lose money at the rate of more than $800,000 a year as a result of the airport agreement, and while you're going to increase taxes for local business owners, you are losing money by not going after and trying to adjust the fixed guaranteed payment and recover money, which you have lost so far, of more than $3 million. So you're going to raise our taxes while losing money at the rate of $800,000 a year, and if you do nothing as a board of school directors to recover this money by September the 1st, which is when the next payment is due, you will lose more than $4 million.
Mr. Doby, we've explained this to you more than one time, sir. Our solicitors at this time told us not to pursue that. We have no choice but to listen to them.
Well, yes, you do have a choice.
No, we don't. That's what we pay them for, sir.
No.
So under their advisement, we have to kind of go with what they say on that.
No, you don't. That's a lie. It's not true.
At this time, we're not going to pursue it, sir. Thank you.
Well, I understand you're not going to pursue it, but the fact that you're raising our taxes every single year while losing this money is a problem, and it's one of the reasons why you should go forward to recover that money. Just with regards to that airport agreement, there are 23, well, just before that, this coming Friday, two days from now, there's going to be a sheriff's sale in media. Innerboro School District has at least seven properties listed for sheriff's sale. Now, I don't know how you feel about people being burdened by overtaxation, which is what this is considered. So now, I want to bring to your attention the baseline properties in the airport agreement. These are three properties that have sold within the past few years. One of them is the Henderson Group, which is listed on here for an assessment of $10,900,000. The International Plaza had a listing of $42 million for an assessment, and Allstate had an assessment of $1.5 million. The total that they have been sold at is more than $150,000. The total that they have been sold at is more than $150 million. So the total of assessments has been approximately $55 million, and they sold to the airport for more than $150 million, which means that you, as a Board of School Directors, have been losing money because of the assessments that were assigned to these, more than $100 million. That $100 million is equal to more than $3,200,000 every single year that you, as a Board of School Directors, have lost. And Ms. Fagan, as my representative, you should have been knowledgeable about this, as well as the persons who have previously served where you do. And you should attempt to address these issues with regards to this loss of money, which you're going to make up by raising our taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dobie. Do we have any other public comment, Mr. Evans?
No, sir.
All righty, moving on to number five then.
Motion 5.1, that the following minutes, the regular meeting of the Inner Borough Board of School Directors held on April 10, 2019, be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 9-0. Next up, number six, we will not have a Solicitor's Report tonight, so we're going to move right on to number seven, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Finance, motion 7.1, that the Treasurers' Report for the month of April 30, 2019, be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 9-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 7.2, that the fund disbursement in the amount of $4,194,384.95 be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 9-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 7.3, to approve the budget transfers for the 2018-2019 school year.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 9-0. Next up, number eight, Mr. Evans, do we have any correspondence?
No, sir.
Okay, moving right on to number nine, committee reports. First up will be Mr. Chivon, 9.1.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. The Finance Committee met on Monday, May 6, 2019. The first item discussed was the 2019-2020 preliminary budget. Overall, our budget saw an increase in its revenue by $858,332. This increase is due to various assessment changes received by the county, an adjustment to the collection percentage, and an increase in the pre-K counts grant and access funding. Our expenditures also increased by $430,678. The major factors that increased our expenditures were increases to the Special Education line item for outside placements and charter school placements, increases to the Pupil Services Department for PCA's, supplies, and professional development, reclassification of IDEA funds, and an increase to the Cyber Cafe line item due to increased enrollment. Overall, we were able to decrease the deficit. The current budget surplus is $224,102 at a 3.1% tax increase. At a 2.6% tax increase, we still have a $16,890 surplus. At a 0% tax increase, that would give us a $1 million deficit that we would have to figure out how to adjust. On the agenda tonight is a proposed final budget that has a tax increase of 3.1%. This is just a procedural vote to ensure that we are following a timeline set out by the state. This is not a final vote on the budget. It is still our goal to minimize the tax increase while also maintaining a quality education for our students. The second item on the agenda was a food service RFP. Mr. High School reviewed the evaluations of three proposals with the committee. The team met with all three companies and spoke with other school districts that have relationships with them. After a thorough evaluative process, the team has recommended to change our food service company from Chartwells and go with Nutrition Group. Nutrition Group guarantees a net profit of $90,871. There's an item on the agenda to approve Nutrition Group to be our food service management company for next year. The third item on the agenda was the Delaware County Community College Budget and Purchase Resolution Update. There were questions about the DCC budget and the purchase of the Prendergrass Building for the $55 million. Some board members had questions on how the purchase would impact our district financially. Mrs. Riley reached out to the college and set up a meeting to answer our questions. Some of the highlights from that meeting include the following. The Delaware County Community College will be financing the purchase through help from PDE and a capital campaign from their education foundation. Inner Borough will not be responsible to pay more each year to support the debt that will be incurred by the college for this purchase. However, we, with the resolution that's on the agenda tonight, we will be extending, if passed, we will be extending our agreement with the college for four additional years through the year 2038-2039, which is an added expense to our district of $1.7 million. Both the budget and the purchase resolution are on the agenda tonight for a vote. Finally, the preliminary financials were discussed. All board members had an opportunity to ask questions, and our committee adjourned, and our next finance meeting will be held Monday, June 3, at 7:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chivon. Next up, 9.2, GBO meeting, Mr. Goldsberg.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. On the GBO meeting that took place last Monday, first item that was up was the operations and facilities update from Mr. Callaway. He informed us of the Tinnicum School improvements of the playground and walkway and courtyard that are going on there, and also informed us of some of the district's summer projects that they're looking at, some paintings, some of the other things that are going on in some of the other buildings. He also updated us on the South Avenue complex and some renovations that are taking place in there, specifically in the snack bar area, and also gave us some information about the high school chiller, which is currently down. And so there were a number of things that were laid out, and as a decision that we talked about, there was a part that was ordered, and that part just came in today, and looks like it should be installed by hopefully midweek next week. So hopefully that will be taken care of. Besides that, the second item that was up was from, Ms. Lambert did a presentation on the Paws to Learn program, and about having dogs coming into the school and being used for therapy, therapy dogs coming in, working with some of the different children, having access to them, and giving them an opportunity to actually just have this going on, having these dogs being trained and also being coming into the schools. Our third item was a technology update by Ms. Hagerty, and giving us an update on what their plans are with some of the different items that we had talked about previously. And then the fourth item was some policy revisions by Mr. High School, and those were for school wellness purchases, subject to bid and quotation and purchases budgeted, all items that were needed to be changed. So those were the things that were in there, the GBO meeting, and our next meeting will be Monday, June 3.
Thank you, Mr. Goldsberg.
Thank you.
Next up, 9.3, the legislative, Ms. Vericchio.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. I attended the Legislative Council meeting last Wednesday, May 8. And again, the main topics of conversation were Senate, House Bill 526 and Senate Bill 34, which are, a brief summary of Senate Bill 34 is, if a school district offers a cyber-based program equal in scope and content to an existing publicly chartered cyber school, and the student in that district attends another charter school instead of the district's cyber-based program, the district shall not be required to provide funding to pay for the student's attendance at that cyber charter school. House Bill 526 is very similar in that if the student enrolls in the full-time cyber education program offered by the school district of resident, the student's enrollment in that cyber education program shall be subject to no tuition or fees other than the fees that the school district imposes on its students generally. But if the student chooses to enroll in a cyber charter school outside of the district, the district is not responsible, the student or the student's parents shall be responsible to pay the cyber charter fees for that amount if they go outside of their district. And again, upcoming this Friday, May 17, I will be attending the Legislative Breakfast at the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, which, again, the main topic of conversation's going to be cyber charter funding. And many school board members throughout Delaware County and school administrators, superintendents are encouraged to come and join us for an opportunity to meet with the local legislators, who will be there to discuss the education policies, which are important to our schools and our students. The main topic will probably be cyber charter education reform. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vericchio. Moving on to 9.4, Delaware County Community College, Mr. Goldsberg.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. As Mr. Chivon mentioned in his finance update, obviously, there was a lot of discussion about the Delaware County Community College budget and purchase resolution, which are items that are on our agenda. Other than that, we haven't had a meeting, we did have a meeting in April, and I think I reported on that at the April meeting. We don't have our next meeting until October, so that's all I have to report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Goldsberg. Moving on, 9.5, Delaware County Intermediate Unit, Mr. Harris.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for hanging out. It was a long meeting. I want to be extra long here. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit met on May 1, 2019. We discussed a contract with Jensen Learning Corp. to provide a full-day workshop on teaching and engaging with poverty. Also discussed was a contract with School District Philadelphia for the DCIU to provide Code.org computer science professional development. Also continued to an articulation agreement with North Hampton College, Community College. We also did permission for 140 medical students and 14 adult chaperones to visit the Mutter Museum in Philadelphia. Upcoming events, as Ms. Vericchio said, is the legislation breakfast held on Friday, May 17, at 7:30 a.m. at the Morton Education Center. Our next board meeting will be on June 5. For more information and news, go to DCIU.org. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Moving on to 9.6, community outreach, Ms. Alonso.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. I just have two things. One, on May 30, Cardinal O'Hara is hosting the Hero Bowl. It's a Thursday night, I believe it starts at 7:30. The Hero Bowl is a fundraiser event to provide scholarships for children of fallen police, firefighters, and EMS workers. We do have several Inner Borough students that will be there attending the Hero, or playing in the Hero Bowl, so I encourage everybody to get tickets if you can and go out and support such a wonderful event. Also today, along with the Norwood VFW post 7213, the American Legion, and our Inner Borough students from all of the schools, we had our students, approximately 120 students, placed about 5,000 flags in an hour and a half at Holy Cross Cemetery for our veterans, after which the VFW provided lunch for the students. I wanted to personally thank Ms. Riley for keeping patriotism as a core value of our Inner Borough School District teachings. I was humbled as a veteran to see such an outpour of community support. Each and every one of those students truly have all the characteristics of what we, as a district, consider Buck Pride. And I want to thank the schools and the staff for such a successful event, and hopefully can continue each year for it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alonso, and we appreciate you and Ms. Riley going out there today. At this time, our students will be excused. Ms. Schumlock, this is your last meeting. Congratulations.
Thank you, Sam. Bye, Sam. We'll miss you.
All righty, moving on with number 10, personnel, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Personnel, motion 10.1 to 10.14, beginning on page 3 and ending on page 6.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 9-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion with regret that the following retirements be accepted. At motion 11.1, Linda Kaut, Secretary in the High School Guidance Office with 31 years of service to the district, be approved for retirement effective June 29, 2019.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Myself, I would just like to thank Ms. Crowe for her dedication to this district. 31 years is a long time to be anywhere, let alone in the school administration office and stuff, so we want to thank her for that. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Evans? Okay. At this time, hearing no, is everyone in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 9-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
I apologize for confusing things. Motion 11.2, Christine Allen, music teacher at Prospect Park School with 22 years of service to the district, be approved for retirement effective June 14, 2019, under the terms and conditions set forth in their current agreement with the Inner Borough Education Association.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Comment?
Yes, Mr. Chivon.
Just as a former student of Ms. Allen, I just wanted to congratulate her on her retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Chivon. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 9-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, motion 12.1, that the Board of School Directors approve Lisa Madormo, Deana Killian, and Brad Colhapp to attend and present at the PAPBS Implementers Forum Conference on May 14-15, 2019, in Hershey, PA, at a cost not to exceed $275 apiece to be paid from kindergarten fundraising funds.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 9-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Special Education, Pupil Services, motion 13.1 to 13.7.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 9-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Technology, motion 14.1 to 14.6, beginning on page 7 and ending on page 8.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 9-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Finance, motion 15.1 and 15.2.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 9-0.
Motion 16, that the Board of School Directors approve the Newman University Facility Temporary License Agreement for the high school graduation on June 12, 2019, at a cost of $11,665 to be paid from district funds.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 9-0. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 17 is a roll call motion that the Board of School Directors approve the final 2019-2020 school year calendar.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call on this, please?
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Ms. Alonso?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Vericchio?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chivone?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 18 is also a roll call motion that the Board of School Directors approve the election of the following individuals to serve as members of the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors for the term of July 1, 2019, to June 30, 2022, from the Chester Upland School District, Anthony Johnson, from Interboro District, Edward Harris, from Radnor Township, Charles E. Madden III, from Ridley School District, Harry McAlley, and from Southeast Delco, Shereen Monroe.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Myself, I would like to thank Mr. Harris for the great job you do on this board in representing Interboro School District.
Comment?
Yes, Mr. Harris.
I'd like to thank the board for their continued support for being representative for Interboro. That's premature because you didn't vote yet.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. It's a given. Hearing none.
It is a roll call motion.
Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call on this?
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Ms. Alonso?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Vericchio?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
No. Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chivone?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Thank you.
Motion carries nine zero. Thank you again, Mr. Harris. Moving on to number 19, Mr. Evans.
Motion 19 is also a roll call motion that the Board of School Directors approve the general operating budget of the Delaware County Community College for the fiscal year July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020, in the form and amounts presented at this meeting totaling $96,976,312. Interboro School District's share is $448,515.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Ms. Alonso?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Vericchio?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chivone?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 20 is also a roll call motion that the Board of School Directors approve Resolution 04202B with the Delaware County Community College for the purchase, financing, construction, and equipping the major capital project on land to be purchased from the Archdiocese of Philadelphia to be used for educational purposes for the project and financing through the state public school building authority not to exceed a final maturity of 20 years. The commitment under the Articles of Agreement between the local sponsors would extend from its current expiration of fiscal year 2034/35, depending on the fiscal year when the board's bonds are issued.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Comment?
Yes, Mr. Chivone.
While I truly believe that the Delaware County Community College plays a vital role for Delaware County and especially Interboro, we get a lot of-- our students go there at a discounted rate. I cannot support this agreement to add four more years without-- while ceding our negotiation power. Adding four more years at $1.7 million is making the decision for a board in the future, and I cannot support adding four years without negotiating the terms.
Thank you, Mr. Chivone. Any other comments?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Goldsboro.
We had asked for some enrollment numbers. Did we get any response from Delaware County Community College as far as that goes? And just a comment on top of Mr. Chivone's, right now, that's using the current share of our amount that we are contributing to Delaware County Community College, the $1.7 million. That's not to say that that amount would not be more in 2034, 2035.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call on this, please?
Ms. Fagan?
No.
Ms. Alonso?
No.
Mr. Goldsboro?
No.
Ms. Vericchio?
No.
Ms. Joseph?
No.
Mr. Harris?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chivone?
No.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion is declined by 7 to 2. And next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion 21, that the Board of School Directors approve the publication of a notice of intent to adopt a new parking tax resolution pursuant to the Local Tax Enabling Act and as presented and approved by the solicitor.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries eight to one. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion 22 is a roll call motion that the Board of School Directors adopts the attached proposed final general fund budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2019, to June 30, 2020, with proposed expenditures of $69,384,139, requiring an increase of 1.1501 mils over the current mileage rate, resulting in a tax increase of 3.1% for a new total mileage rate of 38.2509 mils.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Comment?
Yes, Mr. Chivone.
Again, I just want to emphasize that this is a proposed final budget. This is not the final budget vote. It is our intention to minimize the tax increase as much as we can while maintaining the quality of education.
Thank you, Mr. Chivone. Any other comments? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call on this, please?
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Ms. Alonso?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Vericchio?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chivone?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion 23 is a roll call motion. Motion to enter into a contract to establish salary and fringe benefits with Mr. Morton High School Director of Finance effective July 1, 2019, through June 30, oh, I'm sorry, June 30, 2024, be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call on this, please?
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Ms. Alonso?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Vericchio?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chivone?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion 24, the election of treasurer to serve for the period from July 1, 2019, until June 30, 2020, as per Section 404 of the Pennsylvania School Code.
At this time, I would like to call for nominees for treasurer.
I would like to nominate Ms. Alonso.
Second.
Any other nominees? I would like to make a motion to close nominations.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. At this time, does-- yeah, this has to be a roll call, Ms. Caldwell. Could we have a roll-- oh, it doesn't? Okay. One nominee. Okay. Everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Alonso. You are the new acting treasurer. Moving on to number 25, Mr. Evans?
Motion 25, that the Board of School Directors approve the revisions of the following policies in the categories of pupils and finance. 200 pupils, 246 student wellness, 600 finances, 610 purchases subject to bid quotation, and 611 purchases budgeted.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Do we have any old business? Hearing none. Any new business? And we will hear from our superintendent now.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. I would also like to follow up on Ms. Alonso's comment about the flag-in day today. We did have over 120 students from our high school and community schools volunteer to participate in this event today. It was an amazing morning. The students acted very appropriately. They were very respectful of being in a cemetery environment and how they walked throughout the cemetery, placing the flags, cleaning off some of the headstones. And I just feel it was an amazing civic opportunity for our students today, and I was very proud of all of them. And I would like to thank Christine Alonso and the VFW for providing lunch for our students today. As students were getting on the bus, they were, you know, talking about the history of some of the emblems that they had seen. There are headstones in there, a few dating back to the Civil War. So our students really not only, you know, had an opportunity to do this, but they got an opportunity to really take in some history. So hopefully, and I know this is going to be an annual event, and I know that more kids would like to join next year. I would like to congratulate Jillian Barrett, who is an 11th grader here, and her team. Those students don't attend Interboro, but they were competing in a local 4H competition. They advanced to the state competition at Penn State and took first place in the hippology category, which is the study of horses. I did not know that. And they have to showcase their knowledge and understanding of equine science. Jillian and her team will compete in the national competition in Kentucky in November, so we're excited to see how they do there. And Jill plans to major in animal science in college, so we want to congratulate her. This Sunday, May 19, Interboro is hosting the Soul Sisters Fund 5K Run and Walk for Women and Girls here in the Interboro School District community. Following the 5K, there is a Health and Wellness Fair at the high school. There will be DJ, food, entertainment, and vendors. It is not too late to sign up. We encourage all of our moms, daughters, aunts, grandmoms, everybody, staff, to please come out. You can register between 7:30 and 8:30 at South Avenue. And for more information, please visit the website. And last but not least, I would like to thank Claire Rosemary Riley for providing the T-shirts and all that they do for Interboro School District through the Alumni Association. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Do we have any comments from any of the board members? Mr. Evans?
Comment? Yeah. Just wanted to congratulate the Interboro High School Boys Lacrosse Team for having made it to the first round of playoffs out at Springfield School in Montgomery County. Unfortunately, they came up two points short, eight to six, but it must have been a heck of a game. So I'd like to say congratulations to them and Coach Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any other board comment?
Just a quick comment. Just want to congratulate all of the recipients for the awards tonight. I look forward to attending a bunch of the events towards the end of the school year. Would also like to congratulate Ms. Alonso on the election to treasurer. She's been a great asset to the board, so congratulations. And finally, I'd like to congratulate Mr. High School on the passage of his new contract. As a finance chair, Marty, working with Marty, he does a wonderful job. He deserves everything that he gets in this contract. He knows that budget like the back of his hand, and a lot of what he does goes unnoticed. He sort of gets the bad rap having to say no a lot of times with Mrs. Riley, but just know that the board appreciates all that you do with the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chivone. Any other comments? Myself, I'd like to piggyback on Mr. Chivone. Mr. High School, you do a great job for this district, and it does not go unappreciated. The board does recognize the job that you do, and we do realize how hard it is at times, and we do appreciate it. So thank you. Ms. Alonso, congratulations. We're looking forward to seeing you as our new treasurer. Mr. Harris, thank you for stepping in. I mean, anything that we throw at you, you step right up. You know, you took on the treasurer when we needed one and jumped right into anything that we throw at you, so we do appreciate that. The only other thing I can think of is I'd like to congratulate Ms. Vericchio and Mr. Evans. Both of their children were in the top 5%, so congratulations on that. I'm sure yous are happy about that. That's all I have. Thank you. Hearing no other comments, on Monday, June 3, 2019, a finance committee meeting with the GBO meeting immediately following will be held at 7:00 PM in the boardroom of the Administration Building. The next work session of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be convened in the boardroom of the Administration Building on Monday, June 17, 2019, at 7:00 PM. The next regularly monthly public meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be convened in the boardroom of the Administration Building on Wednesday, June 19, 2019, at 7:00 PM. Thank you all for coming. The meeting is adjourned.